Well, thank you all for coming this morning. I'm very happy to have you here, especially on a Friday morning. I think maybe the coffee had something to do with the size of the crowd. But I will take you any way that I can get you. So, thank you for coming this morning. It's a beautiful day as well. Well, what I'm going to do today is very similar to what I've done with the rest of the town halls. I'm going to kind of go through all the things that are happening in the chancellor's office, the things that I know about. A lot of things are going on in your areas that I don't know about. If I know about them, I'd be happy to talk about them in this forum. So, if you've got exciting things going on, please tell me and I'll come and talk about them in this forum. But I'm going to go through my slides pretty quickly today because a lot of these things have been happening all year and they're coming, some of them are coming to fruition now and some of them aren't yet. So, I'll go through pretty quickly and then leave time at the end just to talk about anything that you have questions on before we start thinking about commencement and then breaking for the summer. So, what I had planned is to talk a little bit more about the organizational structure, the things that are going on with respect to hires, the little bit of a law school update. Not a whole lot has happened since before, but a few key things. The Race and Equity Initiative is ongoing. I have a few things to talk to you about that. Budget development is essentially where it was before, but it won't hurt to tell you what the budget situation is before people leave for the summer. Also, I'm going to talk more about the Strategic Planning Initiative. We're in full swing with that over the next five or six weeks, so I'm going to tell you as much as I can about that and hopefully answer questions you have. And then, at the end, we'll just have an open time. So, in organizational leadership development, the search craze and fatigue is almost coming to an end, but we'll have more, I'm sure, next year. But the only one that I can tell you completely about is SIAS. We sent out the note about a month ago. Dr. Anne Barlett from DePaul University has signed up with us. She came and has already selected an apartment in town. She's excited to be here and she'll be here July 1st. So, that's good news. The Milgard School, we just completed the four finalists, came to campus. Many of you were involved with that and we'll be having a finalist for you very soon. Likewise, in education. In education, we brought four people to campus and as many of you know, we brought one back and that is ongoing right now and we'll be able to tell you about that decision very soon as well. So, they're coming to fruition almost as we speak. Likewise, in the institute, nothing has changed there. We are going to go for that search first thing in the autumn, I almost said fall again, autumn quarter. So, that hasn't changed. The AVCO has not changed either since last time. We did have four people come to campus. At the present time, there is one of those people that we may choose to invite back to campus. I'm waiting for a lot of the other searches to finalize before we make the final decision on that. So, more to come on that. Federal Way, I've talked about that several times. The reason nothing has happened yet is after they visited us and we visited them, they have engaged outside consultant, which is doing an analysis for them and a need study to find out what they would actually need and be able to support in their town. But we're all poised, ready to react to that report when we receive it. Okay, the global work. You all recall that we had a consultant that came in and looked at all of our offices on campus that had to do with global affairs and international affairs. That work is continuing. We received the report early in the year and we haven't really changed from what the direction was. We're in the process right now at the end of finding where we're going to locate that, determining the final leadership and continuing to engage with our supporters on that. So, again, over the next five weeks, you're going to get lots of new things sent to you as these things come to final fruition in the year. It's a good thing we started early because a lot of these things take a long time. Programs to school. I think I have really good news here. We worked on this all year long as well. Finally, it resulted in two formal proposals going to the provost's office in Seattle. I believe those went forward on maybe, it's up here, April 19th? April 11th. April 11th. I think we got the word back on April 19th. All systems go. So, as we speak, Alina in my office is working with the Board of Regents Secretary, getting the paperwork on the Board of Regents Agenda for June to transform both education and the institute into schools. So, that is really exciting news. I think that's exciting enough to have a... And I hope the Board of Regents are watching this and hear that applause because it's still their decision, but I think there's a lot of positive support for that. I believe both the president and provost are supportive of us moving forward and that means that we would have deans in those areas. So, in the institute, that search hasn't started yet. We would search for dean next autumn. So, that's exciting news. The law school. Again, not a whole lot has happened, but one key thing has happened. Bill Kuntz, I see him in the back of the room, who is our chair of our Blue Ribbon Committee. This is the only blue ribbon committee we have on campus. The rest of the committees are purple ribbon or something. But we've hired Dr. Marty Katz, who's currently the dean of the School of Law at the University of Denver and he's very well-known as a very interdisciplinary, leading-edge, innovative dean, has tried a lot of new things in their urban campus. And he is the one that we've hired to do our feasibility study. So, he is working with our Blue Ribbon Committee, with the community. He came to campus, he'll be here several more times and is working with us to try to figure out if it's feasible under the AA, what are the guidelines? I need some help.
American Bar Association.
Yeah, ABA. There's not two As in there, right? ABA, American Bar Association. I get it mixed up with AACSB, which has two As. So, anyway, he's getting us in line with the ABA guidelines to see if it would be feasible, if there would be enough support for a law school here. And I remain firm that we will do the law school if that feasibility study is possible, if the state legislature helps us, if the UW administration and School of Law continue to be supportive of us, and I have no doubt that that won't continue, and if the legal community here in the South Sound continues to step up and support us. All of those things need to be in place and we don't want to drop other things that we've already taken on as a result of this. So, if we can do it in parallel to the other things we've taken on, then and only then will we do the law school. But we are completely open-minded, working on it, trying to see if it makes sense. It would add a level of prestige to our small university. It would be a great thing for us. Just several important things we have to take care of in the meantime and we'll be studying this all summer long. The Race and Equity Initiative. Some of people's feelings with this can be summed up by a picture I took yesterday. I took this on my way in, not yesterday, Tuesday morning. And there's a lot of chalk talk out in the Center Plaza. Our students are very vocal. I love the way our students tell us what they're feeling and they've put here, "They're tired of the Race and Equity Initiative. We need action." And you know, when the president was here, she was here two weeks ago now, on a Wednesday, and she met with the faculty leadership, she met with my leadership team, she also met with the students. The students were very vocal, asking her about this initiative. What was the plan for this? And she was clear that she is supporting this initiative. It's not a one-time thing. The initiative is over at least for four years. She's committed to extending it for four years. This first year was mostly getting the dialogue started. So, it's been a lot of talking about this, which is good for us to talk about it so we understand each other. So, I was really proud of our students and the good dialogue. They were sitting right down here. You can probably tell the picture is right here in front. And they pushed her and she is great to be pushed because she has an opinion on these things and talked about it very openly with our students. So, what is going on? Well, as you all know, we kicked off the Race and Equity Initiative at the same time Seattle did with the speaker. It just so happened that at the end, Henry Belafonte was not able, we were not able to beam that to our campus. So, we recruited Frank Colberson, a local judge. And he came to our campus and did a fantastic address to kick our initiative off on campus. But there's been a lot of things going on. The students had hosted a Day of Hope earlier in the winter quarter and they're doing one. They have one planned for May 18th to continue the dialogue, to find out what the students are feeling about this. And one of the big things they're feeling is our staff and faculty diversity does not even closely match what the changing diversity of our student body is. And that's their biggest ask for us and we need to work on that. Seattle is committed to working on that. We may be doing a little bit better than Seattle, but we're smaller, we're a little more nimble and we could make more progress in a shorter amount of time. So, that's one of the big students, one of the big things the students want. I'm really proud of the proactive action our faculty have taken around this. Our faculty have adopted a resolution concerning support for this initiative. They're changing their bylaws and voting as we speak to more permanently factor race and equity into their committee structures and the ongoing work of that body. And also, they have sent forward a recommendation to my office for us to start at the top and have a one-day workshop where my leadership team and the deans and the directors and the staff leadership and the student leadership all get into one room and talk about these issues, what it is as a campus we need to accomplish moving forward. So, that's happening and it's going to be May 19th, all day up at the Y and I'm excited about that. We have Robin D'Angelo, who is from Seattle, is going to come in and work with us. So, that's going on. In fact, I highlighted it for you there. And then also, our staff have several things going on. They are providing training. I see a lot of them go by on the web. They've hosted a book club and I'm not sure what books they're reading, but I read the notices that that's all going on. So, I've been really proud about how active our campus has been in keeping the dialogue alive. And another thing I'm excited about is our students have invited the judge back to be the commencement speaker and the commencement committee has accepted that. So, Frank, or the honorable Frank Colberson will speak again in our commencement and kind of make a bookend for the year. And one of the things I hope to accomplish out of our all-day workshop is for us to kind of set the stage of what action we can start doing next year. Because it has been mostly talk so far. We've been talking about it, trying to understand each other, and now we need to put things in place. That does not mean we haven't put things in place. We've revised our faculty search guidelines, we've provided training for our faculty. It was mandatory for anybody serving on a search committee. There are many things that we've done, but we will never be done with this work. Two other examples. This one is just in time. Dr. Larry Davis was a speaker or is a speaker that's going to be on the Seattle campus on Monday and we were trying to get him to make a short trip down to Tacoma while he was on the Seattle campus. Finally, yesterday, or maybe the day before, he agreed. So, he is coming on Monday. So, I know it's short notice, but we worked on it. I can't take any credit. Staff worked on that. Got him to agree to come. He's coming down. We're sending a car for him and he is going to speak in car wine on Monday evening. He's a great speaker. He's a profound author. He's the dean of social work, the School of Social Work at Pittsburgh. So, I think it'll be a great evening. It starts at 6:00. Okay? So, you'll want to try to go to that if you can. Likewise, I received notice of this article this morning, which I read before I came. It's really good. This young lady is a professor at Seattle and she was a student, maybe 15 years ago. I should know because I just read the article. Maybe 16 or 17 years ago, I think it was '08, '09? No, it couldn't be that. 1998 or 1999. She was a student at the UW and she explains her experience then and how she doesn't see a whole lot of change from that time till now. It's a very insightful article and kind of challenges us all to get started. Okay, budget development. Again, not a whole lot has changed, except some good news. The state did accomplish the backfill. So, they said they would and they've stepped up and they did for a little bit. They were using some of the backfill for something else, but then the governor vetoed that particular bill, so all the backfill fell into place and we have the backfill. So, that's good news. The bad news, or I guess it's good news, is we're going to have a 4%, up to 4% merit is what they're saying right now. So, that's going to use up a portion of that backfill. But it's exciting. We're going to look at our people first and provide 4% raises. But what that causes us as a campus to do is kind of stay even. We won't be able to do a whole lot of new things. Even staying even, you're going to see in a minute, even staying even means that we'll need to recruit and have about 250 more students in place next fall, next autumn. So, anyway, we're working on that. I know the vice chancellor, executive vice chancellor, is working very hard to try to match faculty searches with the capacity and demand in those areas. We're staying right on top of that. Likewise, all new staff hires. I'm looking at every single staff hire before we even rehire a position. We're looking at that, see if it's critical so that we can still move forward. And one of the reasons I want to make sure we have some flexibility is for a strategic plan. I'm going to be talking about that in a minute and we don't want to be so flat, we can't do some new things that we propose to do in our strategic plan. Okay, enrollment development. Again, no change here. We are going to need somewhere between 200 and 250 students just to be even and the enrollment team with the applications we are receiving, it looks like this shouldn't be an issue, that students are wanting to come here. It's a great place to study. Students are being successful. So, I think we'll have those students here. The issue will be is we have to serve them. We have to teach them, we have to house them, we have to run them through financial aid, all the different things that we do. So, that's good news. We wouldn't want it to be going the other way. No matter what the issues are with going that direction, they're worse going the other way. Student Success Task Force. It's been very active. It's a giant task force and they don't have the strategic plan to act on yet, but I've been really proud of the task force. They're kind of getting their wheels oiled, they're organizing themselves. There are seven different breakout groups that are working. This semester, we have Dr. Emma Rose, her class. What does TWRT stand for?
Writing.
What? Writing. Why is there a T in front of writing? Oh, Tacoma. Boy, stuck my foot in my mouth. Anyway, she is, she's using her user-centered design class as one of the initiatives to pilot some of this work of the Student Success Committee. And they told me that if you aren't on that and you want to be involved, just ask them. Bonnie, Lisa, Deirdre, any of those who are leading that effort, just ask them and they can plug you in. So, I think once our strategic plan gets finished in about six weeks, then we'll be able to bring these two efforts together and there'd be specific things this task force can strive to accomplish based on the strategic plan. Okay, now let's take a few minutes and talk about strategic planning process. First of all, I need to thank Bonnie Becker and Richard Wilkinson, our two co-chairs. Are they both here? There's Richard, there's Bonnie. Let's thank them. I would just be willing to bet they had no idea what they got themselves into when they started. But, that being said, they have stepped up to the plate. I have been so happy with the progress. They've worked extremely hard to engage the campus community. We have a big campus community though and a lot of people are busy and it's hard to engage people. They have things to do, but they've worked really hard, kind of been in our face, so to speak. And I like that. So, what we've done is, this was kind of all the things that we have to do. We've kind of got the first phase complete. I'll show one slide about the first phase. That first phase was really the visioning phase, going out to all of our constituents and remember, we went to almost 1,100 community alumni, faculty, staff, people all over the South Sound, all over our community and asked them what the aspirations they had for our campus in the next 25 years. And Bonnie put all that, she coded that information and put it all into a giant database and then we worked on writing a vision and refreshing our mission as a result of that. And then we kind of organized all that fodder into six strategic priorities and that's what we're working on now in Phase 2. So, in this Phase 2, expect, whoops, can I go backwards? Expect, well, here we go, pressing the wrong button. A call to action sometime in the next several weeks. I know we bothered you quite a bit last quarter with crowdsourcing sessions, a lot of interactions. We came to a lot of your meetings, hijacked your meetings. So, we're going to do that one more time and I don't know exact format. I know we'll use this room. We'll have some kind of open forums and you can come and you can actually look at the draft strategic plan and it'll be on placards or something. That's still all in progress, but we're going to engage you in several ways, have you fill out things on a website. Again, that's in progress right now, so you need to get involved when you see that. But we're right here now. So, we're kind of supposed to have a draft strategic plan. We don't quite have a draft strategic plan, but at our next meeting on May 13th, which is Friday the 13th, we are going to have a draft. It may be rough that day, but after a few days, the team will go back into their offices and we'll have it smoothed out a little bit and that will be the version that we'll come back to you with and get your input before we finalize the strategic plan later in June. And then, the committee will have done most of their work and a smaller group then over the summer will assess the resource requirements for that plan. What's it going to cost us and what's the best way to go try to accumulate those resources? Do we use philanthropy? Do we use auxiliary funds? Do we ask the state? Do we ask Seattle? How do we go about getting those funds? Do we increase our research enterprise? Whatever. Also, we're going to have to create some action plans. We're going to have to get all the units. You know, what does this mean to financial aid? What does this mean to the Career Center? What does this mean to Urban Studies? What does it mean to finance? So, we're going to have to engage that. What's it mean to the library? We'll expect each group then to more fully participate in what it means to them. We're not going to tell you what it means to you. We're going to provide the structure for you and then you fill in what it means to you. So, that will happen in the summer and then we'll launch sometime in the autumn. Okay? So, the big question, I already talked about that, what's your aspirations for urban-serving university, resulted in this vision statement. "The University of Washington Tacoma fosters a thriving and equitable society by educating diverse learners and expanding knowledge through partnership and collaboration with all of our communities." That is a mouthful. My wife would kill me for writing that sentence, but that is our, that is our vision statement that everybody has agreed on. And I didn't put that there. You all put that there. We took that, we floated that, communicated out and people finally agreed. That kind of captures what our vision is. Okay? Then, we had a mission and at the beginning, we weren't really considering changing our mission. You know, that's a big thing to change your mission. We've been here 25 years now, but we ended up tweaking our mission a little bit and this is what we went live with. We passed this all around through the crowdsourcing events. We went to target stakeholders. I'm going to talk about that in a minute. But what everybody said about this was just a few things. They said, first of all, "Foster scholarship, research and creativity to address the challenging problems of our time and place." Very subtle, but also very key to what we think we are as an institution. You know, any institution could work about the challenging problems of our time. Most institutions do that. But how many of them look at the challenging issues of their place like we do too? So, that's a great addition to the plan. And then, "Encatalyze the economic vitality of the region." There was a lot of support about the social part of our region too. So, we added that in. So, we've tweaked our mission statement a little bit, but it's subtle and I think it's powerful. Then, the buckets. We were calling these buckets, which isn't a very rich term, but it kind of gets the idea across. Those 10,000, not 10,000, those 1,100 interactions we had with people, we captured what the people said. Oftentimes, they were on flip charts, oftentimes, they were entering information on a website, but we captured all that. Bonnie and Richard coded that and put it into a database and then it fit together into buckets. Is there a technical term for what they fit into in computer science language?
Facets.
Facets?
Facets.
Okay, facets or something? Yeah, I'm going to stick with buckets. Yeah. Anyway, we put them into six buckets and these are the buckets that we have and we went round and round on establishing these. But first of all, first and foremost, students. So, so many things that people want and aspire us to do involve our students, like duh, of course. So, we all agreed that's got to be kind of number one and we're going to advance student success. No matter what student walks in the door, we're committed to working with that student to provide success. That doesn't mean they don't have responsibilities too. You know, they got to sit in class like you are right now. They have to listen, they have to do their homework. Communities. UW Tacoma is very responsible and responsive to our communities. That came out. That's a long, long list of things. We have to do work to kind of pare down what we're going to do with our communities. Our research is important. This is a place of higher learning. We need to push the envelope. We need to instill in all of our students that thirst for lifelong knowledge. We can't do that if we don't do that ourselves as administrators and faculty. So, that ended up being a bucket. Equity, very important for us. We need to promote that and model it. And that's what I worry about now. We promote it, but we don't always model it in our classrooms, in our meetings, in forums like this. So, we need to work hard to do that. Another place that kind of surprised me, but maybe I'm isolated. I absolutely love working here, but we ended up saying we want to foster a climate that's even better to work here. Can you imagine better than we have it right now? I can't, I can barely, think about that, but anyway. Let's foster a climate and culture for a better workplace. And then, growth. This is something I heard since before I came for my interview. The campus is stressed, kind of fed up to here with our growth. Not because they don't enjoy it. I mean, it's beautiful, our campus as it grows, our students, lovely students, great stories, but strategically growing, resources matching the growth so everybody doesn't feel complete chaos all the time, just trying to survive through the day. Anybody feel like that? Survive? Oh, we can take it off? I better see some hands or I'm going to, yeah, no. So, that's, that's an important one. We got the thumbs up on that. Okay? So, we're moving forward with these six strategic priorities. Okay, we had this compass, Rose, that one of our committee members, a graduate student, actually proposed this idea about representing our core values and you might notice that we added access in as a core value for this particular campus, which I think is an oversight from before. So, I really like that. So, everybody liked this, except community was upside down. And they said, "Turn it over." So, we turned it over. And now, we have agreement on this. Now, this isn't the final version. Our marketing and communications group, I'm sure, will work with this and you'll see this thing somehow appear in some of our print work and for sure, a strategic plan and maybe not this exact form. Okay? But that's going to be kind of our way to show the world our core values at UW Tacoma. So, I'm excited about that. So, then, we took this stuff and we did what Bonnie and Richard called crowdsourcing. So, they organized meetings, eight meetings. We have six strategic priorities. So, every strategic priority was at least at two of those because we did two each one and just invited people, "Come when you can." They were very successful. I think we had 88 people participate, a good breakdown of faculty, staff and students. Some people had so much fun, they came back. But people were very engaged. They were long enough sessions to get some work done so people could think through what they were proposing. And based out of these crowdsourcing sessions, we worked on filling in underneath those strategic priorities with the next step down. Likewise, during the same period, and this was, were the dates there? Yeah. So, this was most of March and April and you'll see from this slide, these are the targeted outreach groups. So, we went after people. We just didn't put it out there for whoever wants to respond to it. We did targeted outreach to a lot of different groups. We invaded advisory board meetings when we knew they were happening in this window of time. We went to institutes. We went to mine. They came to mine and they took over my meeting for like an hour. Faculty Assembly, Executive Council, SIAS Advisory Board. They went to the school districts, the academic council. Those are all the people that report to Melissa. School District Alumni, Executive Committee of our student body, Milgard, Urban Studies, the Race and Equity Committee, Staff Association. They targeted and went to these areas and forced people to look at this work and suggest how we accomplish this work. And what happened was this. Now, I'm not going to keep this up here for very long because I know it's not going to be permanent. It's the current state of our wildly important goals. So, you see each of these six strategic priorities now have a breakdown of major statements on wildly important goals to accomplish, the things that were in that bucket. Okay? things that were in that bucket. Okay? And then, the plan was, then underneath each one of those goals, then we will have more detailed tasks to accomplish that goal. So that was what we just went to our next kind of crowdsourcing activity with subject matter experts. So we took that work of those other groups, the targeted stakeholder outreach and the crowdsourcing. We took that work now and are going to people who are kind of familiar with that area. So for instance, in the research, we go to faculty who have research grants. Joel Baker, who's worked in our research office, to Lisa, who works in the research office, to people around the campus who are involved in that kind of thing, to students as well. And ask them, what do you think of these wigs that are underneath the bucket research? Likewise, we went to our student and enrollment services staff on the students one. So we did all that, and that kind of resulted in, wow, you need to enhance these wigs. So our wigs didn't, I guess, didn't stretch us enough. They're not compelling enough. So over the next couple of weeks, we need to put more wildly importance into our wildly important wigs. So that's happening as we speak. Next week, maybe not today. Are there any of these today?
Next week.
Next week. So most of these meetings are next week, where we're going to work on those wigs and see if we can stretch ourselves. You know, say that we want to be best in class at some of these things. Stretch ourselves a little bit, and then put in measurements and initiatives underneath that that will help us achieve those things. So this is still under construction. It's a little early to tell you. This is kind of a fake wig anyway that I put up here, but you're going to be involved with this over the next couple of weeks. We need a week to kind of get ready, and then we're going to meet next Friday. I told you the 13th, and then we'll be coming to you. So my message is, please get involved. I know we only have five more weeks to the semester, or the quarter, but I want each of you and tell your friends, get involved before this is finished. Because once we have this draft planned, then that's going to be the plan that we're going to work with moving forward. So, anything else happening? Well, I've noticed these, unfortunately. They're finally gone. I was really sad. I got here last year just before these tulips bloomed, and I was just thrilled. So I couldn't wait till this year. They bloomed, and now they're done. What's coming up behind those? Does anybody know? Well, I got those too. Those, I got those.
[laughter]
I don't know what those are.
Allium.
Allium. Am I saying that right? Alliums? Okay. They are beautiful. It was kind of dark out there this morning when I took this picture. You can see the W. And did anybody notice these?
Yeah.
Those are, those are great. I don't know if you had anything to do with that?
Ben did.
Ben did. All right. Thank you. Is Ben here?
He's on vacation.
He's on vacation. Well, we'll give Harlan the credit. Let's give Harlan the credit for this. And there's still a few more to go. I noticed this morning too, there's still some little empty concrete pads. And then, you would have to be, you know, yeah, under a rock, not to see that something's going on. This isn't today, though. This was yesterday afternoon. But I went this morning, and that's still there. I don't know why. Is that going to be saved for some reason? It's coming out today? Yeah.
New art in your office.
Oh, new art in my office. Okay. So a lot of exciting things going on. I know I've missed many things. I went to a faculty assembly meeting a couple of weeks ago. Lot of exciting things going on with respect to race and equity, with respect to improving the work environment for our lecturers, both part-time and full-time. I know the students are working on things. The students have been working on commencement. We had a rally out in the staircase, because the students weren't very happy with the number of tickets they were getting for commencement. And our commencement committee worked really hard with the Tacoma Dome, and we have some temporary extensions of the seating in the Tacoma Dome. They're opening up 1,822 additional limited-view seats to serve the needs of our students. When we have students like we do, and they're first in their college to go to college, or first in their family to go to college, you got to expect they're going to want to bring a lot of people when they graduate. So it would be great if we could have the entire Tacoma Dome, but in the current situation, we have approval for that particular day. And that particular day is right in the middle of like 10 other high school graduations, so there are constraints. But we had kind of a very positive outcome to that. Carl and Brianna worked with the students, so that's going on, and I'm predicting a very, very positive, a happy event for everybody for commencement. So with that, let me stop and take any questions. I believe we have some microphones that you have. Well, if you're not going to ask a question, I'm going to say something. So on, there's a question, but I already started saying something, so you got to wait. So this week, I was looking at Susan down here. We participated in an emergency drill. And many of you, I'm sure, were here and were part of that. So I just want to tell you, I'll take that serious. You know, things can happen. They do happen, and we want our campus to be prepared when something does happen. So thank you for your participation in that. Thank you, Susan, for pushing us on those. I think we're going to have more in the future. And I know you're probably doing something, and that's the worst time to have the drill, but you know, whenever it does happen, whatever it is, it's not going to happen at a time that's convenient. So thank you for doing that. Matthew.
So in the mission and values and all those things, where do discussions of teaching fall?
Teaching? Good idea. Help me.
It appears under students mostly.
Under students.
And we're finding that with the priorities that a lot of our wildly important goals aren't fitting neatly.
And we decided to embrace that. That's totally normal, because what we do is very dynamic.
It is a very dynamic mission. So it often falls under students, but we kind of use students as a big bucket to include teaching, learning, as well as outside of the classroom.
Yeah, it could also be in workplace. If we're providing a work environment for everybody that's positive, that would involve, for faculty, access to, you know, state-of-the-art tools, state-of-the-art training, or what, professional development and new things. So it can be there. Be involved to make sure that you see yourself. Matthew's responsible for the Department of Education, or the education program, which is making teachers, so that's something he probably thinks about every day.
I think also in workplace, we talk about PNT.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, PNT is our promotion and tenure guidelines. So what you saw up there is just the overarching. Underneath all those will be additional initiatives or other ways of explaining the outcome we're trying to achieve. Thank you for that question. Next question. Okay, you can pass out the test now.
[laughter]
That's why we had you sit this way today. Well, I'm not going to prolong your morning. I'm happy to have you here. We probably won't have another town hall before the end of the quarter, but hopefully I'll see you. We have many events between now and the end of the quarter. I'll see you at events, and I'll see you out on the campus. So thank you for coming.